Steve, I think you should make Eric Molander share a picture of his new grandbaby.
Ooh, I love that idea. That's a great start to the new year. Do you have one? Do you have one available here?
Congratulations, Eric.
We only have three hours for this meeting.
You might not want to give him control of the share function.
No, seriously, it's amazing how eight pounds, thirteen point two ounces of joy can change your life. And quite honestly, I was thinking about all of you as I held my grandson for the first time and realized that, you know, over the next eighty or a hundred years of his life, you know, there are going to be, you know, remarkable changes. And here we are, setting up a new form of government and setting up significant investments that are going to last for fifty, sixty years of his life. And it just made me grateful for all the effort that my colleagues are putting into this. And I say that broadly, including the staff and our consultants, because this is going to have a lasting impact on the human condition. So, thank you.
Well said, Eric. And with that, let's call the January 4th meeting of the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District to order. Wendy, can we go through a roll call?
Yes, Nancy Henderson.
I'm here.
Steve Fancher.
I'm here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Ripman.
Here.
Seth Reiser.
Here.
Lori Stegman. Ken Anderton.
Here.
Corky Collier.
Here.
James Allison.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid.
Here.
Tanny Stephenson.
Here.
Eric Molander.
Here.
Ed Washington. Bob Salinger. Heather King.
Here.
I have twelve members present.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a quorum. Not that this is a voting meeting, this is a work session, but good to know. First order of business, we have Bill Owen up for an operational update. Bill, are you ready to go?
I am. Thanks, Steve. So, good afternoon, all. I hope not to take too much of your time for a couple of minutes with a quick briefing. As you might know, the California area, northern California areas, they're experiencing several atmospheric rivers. The last one coming in midweek this week. And it's, it dropped nearly five and a half inches in twenty-four hours in the San Francisco area. So, it's a lot of rain. And the missile forecasts have going through.
Bill, do you want to... Cutting out, is there something you can do to adjust your mic or anything? You're kind of coming in and out.
Yeah. Let me turn off my video and see if that helps at all.
Bill, I don't know if your mic is up or something, but when you turn your head, you get too far from your mic. I don't think it's a connectivity issue.
Okay, sorry. Let me see if I can adjust that. Is that any better?
You're coming through for now. Thanks.
Okay, great. Adjust this a little bit.
Probably turning your video back on, too. I think it was just a proximity issue.
Okay, so hopefully you all can see me fine. Yes, so there was, there was quite a bit of rainfall that came through the California area, northern California. And in particular, it's, those atmospheric rivers can fluctuate, but this time they hit up in California. If you were around during the Christmas holiday, you know that we also experienced some pretty heavy rain. In fact, I did a little bit of math and found that the west side, closer to I-5, had a rain event that was closer to a five-year event. So, it was just over three inches in twenty-four hours. But way on the Troutdale side, it was under a two-year event, so it was around two inches. So, the storm amounts varied, but the response that we provided and some aftermath was, I think, was noteworthy for me to share. The system performed well throughout the drainage system. It's performed as expected. But even with a two-to-five-year event, many of our pump stations were over capacity. They couldn't, they just couldn't keep up. So thankfully, the rain stopped early enough before flooding started. But, and every, there were some power outages, but PGE and Pacific Power helped us get back online pretty quickly, so there's nothing major. So, all of those things were good. The operations team performed quite well despite being a little shorthanded during the holiday season. So, all those were good news, but it, someone on the ops team reminded me that, you know, we were a bit lucky. Nothing was, no of our, nothing in our pump stations failed. And we had no major power outages with a couple of small ones. And it functioned as expected. So, but if any of those things happened, we're down at least one pump in each of our, most of our pump stations, and the flooding risk shoots up dramatically. And so, our reliability for our current system just is not very stout. And even for a small event like this, we, it performed as expected, but there's not much of a backup plan. There, we have one. It just takes time to implement and if we have availability of the equipment to be brought in. So, it was, those were some, some striking conclusions that others had and some of my own reflections. Unfortunately, just after the event happened, within twenty-four hours, one of our pumps at the main pump station in PIR in Penn One failed, and it'll be out for the rest of the year. So, we're down to less than fifty percent capacity there. So, I'm hopeful that we won't have any major events that come through during that time, and we'll be able to keep up. But yeah, so the redundancy is, of our system still is quite shaky. We've, we've been good about documenting on many of these problem areas, and that's why we have been able to provide you some of the information you've seen to date about some of the capital needs. And we'll be talking more about that in the coming weeks. So, yep, unless there's any questions, just wanted to give you a quick recap of what's happened recently. Thanks.
So, could you include just a quick overview of the use of the tripweir in handling the water at the STIC pump station?
I can. Sandy Pump Station out in SDIC, technically in Fairview, but close to the Troutdale line, was also, was overcapacity. So, the rainfall created an overcapacity situation. So, the pump station couldn't keep up. But thanks to many of the partners here, we were able to construct the tripweir as part of the ports development project out in that area. And so, we were able to operate that weir and create some more storage in the wetland that's near those properties. And so, that helped reduce the amount of water getting to the pump station, let the pump station keep up. So, we haven't had the opportunity to use that weir very often since it was installed in 2018, handful of times. But this one, we were very thankful for despite being less than a two-year event. So, when it gets bigger events, you know, it's really the twenty-five-year events and higher that makes, that start making me feel pretty uncomfortable. So, I see Eric's hand up.
Yes, just two questions as part of this. Number one, are you concerned that a two-year event, actually moving towards these extraordinary measures like the weir being put into place? And second, have we ever put a price tag on what it would cost us in terms of capacity to be able to handle a twenty-five-year event?
So, I am concerned that we have trouble handling the two-year events. That's not what a flood protection agency, flood safety agency should use as this metric. It's, it's way too low. The cities in this area use at least a ten, about twenty-five-year event to, for its conveyance design standards. So, that makes me feel uncomfortable. I don't have costs for the twenty-five-year events to keep, to bring everything up to that level. I do for a ten-year event. And so, with some combination and some additional work, we can get to that point. So, the suggestions, recommendations from the PMLS work that's going on, as well as the drainage master plans that have all been finished as of two months ago now, all of them can provide a close estimate of what that could entail.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Any other final questions, comments? Nope, not seeing. Okay, we're going to move on. Sarah O'Brien's gonna present or facilitate the discussion around timeline and critical path.
Everybody, welcome back from your holidays. I am recovering from the RSV like I think a lot of folks right now, and also still traveling. So, I'm gonna try to hold myself together for a little bit of conversation here. And I will also be assuming that unlike Eric Mullender, maybe some of us didn't spend the last two or three weeks mostly focused on the importance of the, the new district. I still can't do the initials. And so, what I'm going to propose here is I'm going to do a couple of quick process updates and proposals. And then we have this like pretty packed agenda of updates and sort of next steps in all of the streams of work that we've been talking about over the last few months. And so, I'm actually, and I know there were some changes fairly recently to the agenda. So, what I'm going to do here, Mr. Chair, with your permission, and having kind of debriefed a little bit with staff earlier, I'm going to actually just talk us briefly through the agenda for the rest of the day here, and, and then try to connect that to kind of our broader process conversation. Thanks, Steve. So, hopefully this looks familiar to folks. We've gotten through our process or our ops update from Bill. Thanks for that. And we're going to come with kind of, you know, you'll remember, and I'll pull this up again in a second, these streams of work, right? The work on the operating revenue, the work on the GO bond, the work on dissolution that we've not had much of a chance to dive into yet, and all the little timelines associated with that. We're going to bring you this like fruit salad of small and mid-sized items from all of these different, maybe it's more of a fruit cocktail, from all of these different paths today. And hopefully what you'll see in this is, you know, each of these streams, we're keeping it moving forward in parallel. We're making progress on each of those. They're a little disjointed, but we have some turning points over the next couple of months that we're kind of bringing all these pieces, bringing all these threads together, weaving them together to bring back for the big decisions that we talked about last time that you have coming up around your broader revenue strategy and structure. So, our first step here is just for me to provide some general process updates and bring back up those figures to help you see where we're at in our roadmaps. The next step will be, I'm going to propose for folks who are here, and I think most of you are here for the December nineteenth executive session that hung and, and our external counsel led us through on the Guiding Principles document. I'm going to circle back and sort of finish with a process suggestion for moving that work, body of work forward based on discussing that work with Jim and staff over the last couple of weeks. Then we're going to dive back into the financial forecast, but just briefly, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share with you what we've been hearing from you so far in a really synthesized form. And what, what we're trying to craft out of this is, okay, Lori and the team are really working on updates to that financial forecast in sort of bits and pieces. And we have an update later from Colin on the work of the technical advisory group so far that, that met in December. We're trying to put all those pieces together to bring you probably next month or at the, sometime in the next three meetings, revised proposed version of that financial forecast document. So, I'm going to do more or less what I did last time and say, here's what we've heard from you before. We went through all of the meeting notes. We're really trying to provide a high-level synthesis and then say, okay, we're trying to figure out what you're going to need to say yes to us moving forward with this work, so this can go back into the next revenue modeling effort. This is what we're hearing so far. What are we missing? What have you shared with us that's a really high-level important feedback on this work that we might have missed? So, that'll be a brief presentation, brief discussion. I understand Anhela is going to dive a little bit into a question that came up last time related to that on what the current assessment allocation methodology is that's been worked into the revenue structure. So, we're going to like shift gears on you there from financial forecast to revenue structure. And then Colin will provide that update. We promised to report back from the technical advisory group meeting. I know a couple of board members listened into that, provide the results from that. And then I want to let folks know we'll have another one of those in January, in a few days, actually, that we'll also report back on. So, this is the cycle of like, we're getting the big picture issues here. We're taking them out to the technical group. The staff is working on them. The consultants are working on them. And we're meeting back here to bring you sort of the next step iteration of each of these. Finally, we'll dive back into the GO bond process, and Jamie Damon will join us at the end with a clear sort of process recommendation on that work going forward based on all the individual interviews she's been having with board members. And if that doesn't take us up till three o'clock, I'll eat my hat. So, hopefully we'll all be still holding on to our seats at that point and, and tracking along. I'm going to now briefly share with you how I think that fits in with the, the structure and kind of the roadmaps we've been discussing so far. I'm going to let you skip the actual roadmap one. But this is the figure I was talking about, right? We've got this stream of work on operating revenue that includes both our kind of estimates on how much money we might need, this preliminary financial forecast.
I'm just seeing the agenda still. I don't know about others.
I made it a whole week without a video call, and I probably forgot how to do the entire thing. What do you think? There we go. How's that? Thanks, Jim. We have this body of operating revenue work up here in blue. We're trying to get to this point, hopefully in February or at latest March, where we have an adjusted forecast and an adjusted rate analysis. What we're going to do over the next couple of meetings here is bring you back the proposed changes. What are we hearing from the technical advisory group that needs to change on each of those products? What are we hearing from staff in terms of the way that they've been able to respond to the feedback you've given so far? And what are we hearing from the consulting team in terms of how they're able to respond to what you've given so far? And what do they recommend in terms of changes to the next run of their model, basically, to create this rate analysis? All of that is heading us towards this point of having a director's recommendation on a proposed revenue structure that we're hoping to be able to discuss with you in the neighborhood of February and March. And then that will be heading us towards that sort of spring likely into summer effort to bring you kind of this full revenue package proposal that, that you can vote on and start moving forward with the ordinance and resolution. Jamie's going to talk to us in much more detail about this GO bond process and the recommendation there. She's going to provide this process recommendation today, and we'll have a chance to discuss that. We're really going to try to hold forty-five minutes on the discussion, on that, at the end for that discussion, so that Jamie can dive into that. I think at the previous meeting, we weren't able to get into that in a great deal of detail, but she has a nice stakeholder engagement proposed approach and, and calendar to include with that. Again, this dissolution work is, is mostly off on our horizon at this point, but it's something hung, and the staff team are tracking really closely. So, that's kind of the big picture landscape. And so, you can see, we're just trying to nudge along each of these individual streams of work within these three areas at each of the meetings. And so, sometimes I think it can feel a little, a little mishmash, but because, it's because we've got a lot of this. I want to mention this. I'm not going to go through it point by point, because I think we've at least given you the part that we're most certain on at this point, the January and February portion. And we just want to have this kind of running, here's what the next couple of months look like from the staff's perspective, from the consultant's perspective. We're talking to you about process and GO bond process today, these little amendments, these little responses to some of the concerns around those two forecast and, and rate analysis packages. I want to remind folks, as, as Lori shared in our earlier December meeting, the budget season is kicking off, and that's separate from a lot of what we've been talking about. I won't facilitate probably that process for you, but it'll be a separate body of work going into your next fiscal year to start building and, and getting ready for this board to approve the budget for the next fiscal year. So, that's when you'll get to really dig into the detailed level of, you know, funding that you'll be approving for the district in the new year. I will try to keep those running in parallel and try to keep ourselves on schedule, obviously, with both of them. And I'm going to ask us to kind of remember the process chat that I, I proposed early in December of like taking these opportunities where we have a little bit of conflict or a little bit of attention in areas that the board is working on. When we see these opportunities where we're getting feedback from the board that's a little bit intention, that's a little bit difficult for the staff to know what to do with two different kinds of feedback, to be taking those out into small group discussions, and then ask one or two or three or four board members to bring those back. So, I'm going to propose to you today, this is a definite spoiler for the next agenda item, I'm going to propose to you that that's part of our next steps on Guiding Principles. And we may well, following on the tag meeting, want to do another focus kind of small group conversation on the financial forecast, depending on what level of detail we're able to get to there. And then our goal is for both the Lori and the Echo team and staff to be coming back to you in February with these proposed changes to say, hey, here's what, based on your feedback, here's the big picture, here's the big changes we're proposing to make, make in this next round of rate analysis. Anything else we should know before we hit the button and let the Echo team run with that? And then we have some additional sort of details around property comparisons and flood information, flood insurance information. Basically, all of the process recommendations are kind of way we communicate around this that we discussed in the last time we dove into that rate analysis discussion. We're going to keep those moving forward and just keep providing you these little kind of educational, informational and feedback opportunities on each of these streams moving forward. Again, with the goal that by March or so, we're coming back to you with an executive director's recommendation based on the new model run, the new rate analysis and the results of that, and a clear understanding of customer impacts. I think if there's one thing we clearly heard in feedback to Echo Northwest's initial presentation is we really need a much clearer picture of how the rate structure that's being proposed, which will change by then, is going to affect customers, customers' price points or costs going forward. And so, the Echo team and staff are working together on how to provide a clear comparison of current and proposed future and sort of alternative future cost impacts associated with that. And you're going to create a budget at the same time. So, there's, there's a point in each of those months for that, too. This is a lot to absorb. There are wheels within wheels here, but this is kind of my big picture process view. Are there any quick questions before we dive into the next couple of agenda items here? I'm going to take my slides down so I can see, and I can bring it back up if you need. Mary Helen, process question?
Well, the process, I've had too much time to have to sit in my recliner chair because I'm going on heart surgery soon, so I have to hold still. But I got back into my old boxes, and I just wonder how much historical work has been included in these guiding principles? Or did they start over? Because in February twenty-one, there was Financial Levy Ready Columbia. And I think Corky and I, Bob Salinger, Tanny, were around Levy Ready Columbia days. And there was a financial policy principles developed. Peggy Yates, who we've skipped over, I've not ever heard mentioned, did a lot of work in revenue development. There was a revenue development RFP. I don't know whoever got that or what the work was from that.
That's what we're doing now, Mary Helen. That's the Echo team. That's the work we're working on now.
It's already done February twenty-one. Why are we redoing it now? Or how is that money spent or used currently? And I'm, I'm just curious if we just, because the staff is all new, except for Colin was around in Evan, did we just pay for those contracts? Take what they did and now paying for some...
No, I, Mary Helen, I think, I'm going to give Colin a chance here, but I just want to assure you that, that is all sitting there. We're all incorporating it. I think if you look back even at the guiding principles that you mentioned at the beginning, Hong has included as appendices there, the past products, you know, just to be clear that we're working those in. And so, I'm going to take us to guiding principles next. I'm going to suggest, Colin, that if, you know, staff want to connect back with Mary Helen to connect the dot sum around those specific contracts that we do that offline, but I promise, 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 we've got the boxes, too. And Colin is the person that is at the center of a lot of this work, and he has been here for this entire time. So, I know we don't say it very often, because you would get tired of us saying it if we did. But I promise you, the staff are really working hard to make sure that we're, we're building a pyramid here. We're building stair steps. So, we're building on all our past work and...
I just have not heard it mentioned, and that's why I was asking.
Okay, thank you. No, I promise. Colin, is there anything that you wanted to add to that? Yeah. It is, it is all the work that's contributing to what you're seeing today.
Yep, and it is included in that October memo, and it has the backend sort of, yeah, just as Sarah said, building upon those principles and the work that we've done before.
Just quickly, when you say October memo, one that you wrote that's in a meeting, that I can build the document library and find?
The initial version of the guiding principles that, the memo is from Hong, and then the attachments include some of those previous, basically the building blocks for our existing guiding principles.
Okay, okay. I'll go back and read.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll bring those back in, Mary Helen. I have some next steps to propose on the guiding principles document here, but I'll make sure that when we bring that back, we make it clear that we've got those appendices and see if we're missing anything. Okay? Seth has his hand up.
This is a, this is a follow-up to what Mary Helen asked. I was wondering if the, the same is true for the 2019 FCS study on the revenue, whether or not that's been incorporated by the work that Echo Northwest and the staff have done on the budget work?
I know they talk about it all the time, Seth. I'm going to go to Colin for more detail than that.
Yes, absolutely. So, the FCS work started in 2017 and concluded in 2019. And so, the Echo team took all of that previous work and analyzed it frankly, and how we discuss it is it's a proof of concept. That's how those numbers were used. There's a lot of really good analysis that has been brought forward. The numbers themselves should be seen as kind of points in time that needed to be revisited. But as far as a proof of concept that we could turn our existing assessments into either, you know, a service fee and also to be able to spread beyond the existing managed floodplain based on either costs or benefits received, that a lot of that good work that was done through the Levy Ready Columbia partnership with FCS Group is moved forward as well as the in-plan model assumptions that FCS Group did. Thank you.
Yeah, and Eric Molander, I re, oh, sorry, I interrupted you, Seth. I was going to remind us of a past conversation here real quick, too, but go ahead.
And just as a follow-up to that, is there anything that links the, the final recommendation for the operating budget that FCS had with the one that we started with in the Echo Northwest process?
Explicitly, no. That, the proof of concept in the numbers that were in there, when we actually dig into it, you'll see that what the cost estimates were for the work that FCS Group did, didn't even match the existing district's combined budgets at that time. So, it, it serves as a really good proof of concept. It did separate the capital projects from some of the O and M work. It was a really good analysis, but we did need to revisit all the budget based on current realities.
Yeah, and I was going to remind folks, too. I remember Eric Mullender, for example, bringing up the other day when we were going through that trip, you know, analysis and thinking about how to deal with our business disruption data. That is something that I think, similar to Mary Helen's point, we'd been working on it behind the scenes, but didn't bring that as background when we brought a proposed new approach. So, I know, I know the Echo team has been really poring over that, even connecting with folks from FCS. I know we have, Colin, we have at least one member of the technical advisory group that was at FCS at the time and involved in that analysis that's helping us remember to connect the lines there. So, I don't think you want us to say it every single time we pull something out of five-year-old information, but it is, they, they really are doing their best effort to make sure. But many of those things, the data has evolved, the, you know, the approach has evolved, and we've just gotten to a much finer level of resolution than we were at at that time. Okay, I'm going to ask us to move to the next agenda item then on the guiding principles, because I think that's where Mary Helen started. And I want to make sure, folks, folks who are there will remember when we left that December nineteenth meeting, we really spent a lot of time in executive session mulling over the information that, that Hong and external counsel brought us as part of Jeff, as part of that conversation. And we hit the timer, we hit the buzzer before we were able to kind of decide what our next steps were. And so, I want to take a minute, I don't have slides on this, but I want to take a minute to share with the board just kind of what I was hearing in that conversation and a proposal for next steps that I think can, can help us move forward with that. The, the concerns that I heard as a part of that conversation, that I'm going to keep it a very high level here, recognizing that we don't want to rehash an executive session out of executive session. We heard Hong describe the importance of that document in terms of kind of connecting the dots between ORS 550 and our current work and kind of leaving ourselves a clear logic trail showing why the district's work and investment... and kind of leaving ourselves a clear logic trail showing why the district's work and investments are headed in the direction that they're headed. We heard concerns from, from board members, I think around some of the, what might be perceived as some narrower language, especially that kind of flood first language. I think is where a lot of folks who had concerns about a relatively narrow interpretation of our mandate were focused. We heard folks sharing that they were concerned that that document was maybe a little redundant or maybe confusing and that it was similar to, but maybe slightly different some, from some past products and those could include, you know, ORS five fifty and the mission vision values language, although I know Hong was quite careful to provide that cross wiring to, to the best of her ability in that draft. But also the levy ready Columbia work and, and some of the other kind of foundational documents that we have at our disposal. I think there were a couple unspoken messages there too, and I'm reading between the lines a little bit, but I, I want to share my own observations as well from your discussions, which is, I think part of what that document, the value that I see that that document provides is that it continues to step down. If you imagine this kind of, you know, ORS five fifty is your highest level direction. You've stepped that down into mission vision values language. Part of the challenges that I see this board facing is we're kind of trying to operationalize that with a little bit of a missing middle. We don't exactly know how to get from mission vision values to where do we get our money from and how do we make our investments going forward? And that's a really common challenge, especially in this kind of situation where we're trying to get our revenue structure in place ahead of an actual strategic planning process, right? When we showed that big winding roadmap diagram, we're a long ways from being able to kind of get to levels of service, a clear strategic direction with identified goals and a set of investments that you would approve in each budget, you're tied to those. That's a long ways out into the future. And so what we're trying to do is get the revenue in place that you need to implement before you have those written documents. And that, that really is the, the way we need to do it. We need to get this revenue rolling before the, the district runs out of money to be able to move that forward. But I think that's part of the challenge that I see you guys wrestling with in these more detailed documents like the rate analysis or the financial forecast is how do we balance some of these tensions between, on the one side, I hear a lot in all of our conversations, a number of folks who really want to say, hey, I want to document, I want to share, I want to ensure that we have an integrated, a modernized, updated, a, a different approach to flood management than made sense in the nineteen fifty, sixty, seventies. We're responding to that, we're growing that. That was the point of why we created this new district was to provide a more integrated approach to this work. And I hear folks, a lot of folks saying in all of our conversations on the other side, we need to take fiscally responsible approach to the way that we're doing this, both out of respect for the public dollar and the private taxpayer, and also to make sure we don't sink our own ship by, you know, growing too much, growing too fast and overwhelming our community's ability to pay for these services. We've gotten a lot of other feedback in a lot of other places. But what I want to share back with you guys is that I think that this, it's possible that this document could be a way for the board to express your understanding of that tension and the fact that you're holding those two values side by side. We want a modernized approach to flood management and we need to be careful with our costs. And to put that someplace for you to come back to, you know, some of these concepts are also in the Echo Northwest sort of criteria around the revenue, revenue structure that I think you actually approved as a board. But you don't really have something that expresses the way that you want to guide funding and investment and, you know, the way that you structure this organization going forward. So what I would propose is sort of a set of next steps is that's a hard needle, the thread with seventeen people on a Zoom meeting. And I, I know that we all don't want to wordsmith that document in one of these full meetings. I, I guarantee you, if I don't want to facilitate it, then you don't want to experience it and I don't want to facilitate it. But what I would propose is, you know, back a couple of meetings ago, I shared this kind of, do we play tug of war? Or do we kind of weave a cloth together? And I think there's an opportunity to do that here. And so in talking through the feedback that we heard and the conversation that we heard in that December nineteenth meeting with Jim and the staff, kind of like to make a request of the board to send two or three or four of you, not an official committee, not an official work group, not a standing anything, but a couple of folks to go offline to sort of hash out the details of what would line edits look like to that guiding principles document? That got it to a point where it really felt like the voice of the board in terms of how we manage these tensions going forward. I think having read through that document a lot of times, that what Hong produced is really close in many ways to creating that for you. And she's also kind of already wired in a lot of the sort of, you know, legal compliance and legal certainty or legal transparency issues that you need to be able to make sure that you loop into that. But I think there's relatively few lines in that kind of flood first section that folks are experiencing these concerns about. And I think there's also an opportunity for folks who are especially concerned about a fiscally responsible approach to this work to add some content to that that expresses that, that you'll be able to, so you can anchor your future conversations to this document in that way. So what I would like to propose is that two of you, two, four of you, that, and no more, that represent these different sides, get together offline, either a Zoom meeting or a cup of coffee and just scribble on a piece of paper. I'm happy to facilitate and work on some line edits. And then bring them back and actually have your board colleagues present to you back this document. Ask staff to review it, ask Hong to review it and see if it still meets the same sort of legal purpose that she had in mind when she first proposed this. But ask the board to kind of take some leadership in crafting this document as something that's going to be useful for your purposes and that's going to reflect your shared values. So I would like to propose two people that I heard strongly expressing each of those views that I think are, they're not in contract, they're not in conflict, right? You can be fiscally responsible and provide a more integrated approach to flood management. They are not in direct opposition. But there are a little bit of intention in all of the conversations that you had. So Steve Fancher, I have heard you speak up quite a bit in the last couple of meetings about concerns about cost. And if you are willing, I would like to request that you be a member of this little scribbling group. Nancy, I've heard you speak up a fair bit as well about the need to more robustly codify and integrated or a modernized or a sort of multi-sector approach to to flood management and sort of how we thread that needle between ORS five fifty's multiple purposes and the way that Hong gave us some, some background on, on interpretation there. If you guys would be willing to sit down and scribble on that, I would invite if one or two members wants to volunteer, you can raise your hand or, or volunteer in the chat. But I think everybody has the opportunity. I suggest we send out a word version of that document to anybody that wants to propose specific edits. And just ask you to make those edits and send them on to Steve and Nancy. And you guys, I'm hoping could meet once or twice between now and our February meetings and then bring back a proposal to the board and staff with how we can keep that moving forward. Or if you reach the conclusion that we're not able to sort of reach a, maybe not full consensus, but a strong multi-partisan solution to that challenge, then maybe it's time to set that document on ice for a while until we're ready to, to re-approach it again. So Steve and Nancy, I saw you nod. I mean, Jim, go ahead.
We'll provide staff support and
And we'll provide staff support. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to help in any way I can as well.
Staff support and lunch, I hope.
Did you just offer to buy lunch, Steve?
I was offering to eat lunch. I don't know if I was offering to buy it.
I think I offered somebody in this room homemade cinnamon rolls at some point. If, if you guys will wordsmith this document, I'll
I recall owing a few people sandwiches, but I can't remember who I owe. I know I owe some sandwiches, so.
I have some cinnamon rolls parked right here. Eric, I'll still bring you cinnamon rolls anytime you want.
I'd be happy to help out as well. I've been talking with Heather and, and Bob Salinger and others about this and I'm gathering those ideas and I'd love to, to work with Steve and Nancy on it, so.
Great. Okay. Any concerns about this process? Anyone? Anyone want to share some text edits? You can just do that offline too. If folks want to sit down and take a closer look at it at home and share your opinions with Steve and Nancy, that, that will be the, the easiest and the most efficient way for you to chip in, but everyone will get a chance to discuss the results, right? We're just asking Steve and Nancy to come back with the next
Put on the list to get the Word document because I don't know my availability in the next month. And so, but I would like to be able to comment and I second Eric being included because he represents neighborhood groups.
It's great to have a neighborhood representative in there as well. I think that's a great solution.
Nancy and Steve are jurisdictional and I think we need to have that kind of insight and Eric's done a lot of work that way and his fiscal knowledge far exceeds anything that I could ever add, but I would like to see the document and edit it.
Of course. Yeah, happy to send that on if you need some reading material while you're preparing or in recovery. That would be great. Okay, I don't see any opposition. Let's give it a try, folks. And if this works great, then we'll know that, that this is a good model to wrestle with these little challenges as they come up. And if it doesn't work great, and if Nancy and Steve are at Lagerhead and Eric are at Lagerheads at some point, then we'll report back and, and come up with some different next steps. I've been talking for a long time. Are you still going to listen to me if I talk about the financial forecast now? Maybe, maybe. Okay. Let me pull up a different set of slides here. This is the last, let me actually check. I think this is the last agenda item you're going to hear from me on, so. So you can stop listening to me pretty soon here. Let me make sure I have, do you see my, my operational slide here with the we are here box? Great. Let me put it in this mode. How many folks have read the book at some point in your lives, even if you don't remember any of it, Getting to Yes? Do we have any conflict management, business negotiation folks here who have read Getting to Yes? It is one of my favorite. I see a lot of, okay, so Steve Greenwood's book and Getting to Yes are the popular reading of this group that, that folks like to dig into. It is one of my favorite books in the world. And I think it is probably what the staff and the consulting team find, ask themselves, asking themselves behind the scenes as often as anything is what do we need to work into this model for as many people on the board as possible? And if possible, everybody to feel really comfortable when we come to this step, oops, sorry, way down the road here, when we come down to this board vote on ordinance and resolution. What do we need to have worked into our vision of how the district will collect money? And how it will spend it and really big picture, high level stuff that we're working on now for folks to be able to vote yes. For folks to feel very comfortable regardless of who you are, your values, your, who you represent on the board. We want as many possible people as possible on this board to be able to very happily vote yes to that ordinance and resolution that we're building all of the building blocks for along here. So this is the box we're headed for next. We've been here for a while and probably some of you are tired of me or someone else coming and saying, hey, here's what we've heard from you so far. Is there anything missing? But we really want to get it right because where we want to get to is a point where we have an adjusted forecast with a big picture number and, and, you know, sort of rough allocations to share with the Echo team so they know what they're trying to build a revenue structure for so that they can revise their rate analysis that they shared with us in November that we were not entirely pleased with, but we knew it was a wrong first draft. So those are the pieces that we're trying to get to. So where we're trying to get to again is that Sarah Rich and Nick and the team are coming here hopefully in February to say, okay, we got this adjusted forecast, the tags had a chance to talk through that, the board has had a chance to talk through potential revisions to the forecast. We understand what the revenue is that we're trying to raise here. Here are the changes we're going to make to the rate analysis model that we, we shared in November. And then we're going to push the button and the model's going to come back to us with, you know, a proposed rate structure and additional information in a better form than last time on what those customer impacts like. So for a long time now, I've been sharing this slide with this box that says you are here, but we're trying to get here so that we can keep things moving forward within the next few meetings. So that's where we're headed. I want to remind folks, I'm going to focus on the feedback that I've heard from you on the financial forecast. I'm going to remind folks of the intent of that and why we need that. We need that in place before we ask the Echo team to do their work again or do their analysis again. I'm going to remind you of the intent and I'm going to give you a super high level synthesis of everything at the highest view that I think that the staff has heard from you and that the consulting team has heard from you that needs to be worked into this revised financial forecast. We still have input coming from the technical advisory group. We'll still report on that in our, in our second January meeting and potentially into February. There's more coming, but I'm going to remind you of intent and say, here's what we've heard from you so far. Is this starting to look like what you would need to see in the way of changes to be able to say yes to a revised financial forecast? So a reminder of the intent, it's not a budget, it's not an investment, it's not a commitment to invest, it's not a permission to spend. The goal is to get just enough detail in this to allow the Echo Northwest team to revise their model. And for that, we need the big ballpark number. So how much, how much money do you need to be able to responsibly, you know, report to the public that you're meeting your mandate, your new ORS five fifty mandate, starting with year one and going forward? And enough info on the cost allocations with, which on hell is going to talk about in quite a bit more detail later here for them to think through basis and proportionality, right? So you don't end up with a mismatch of the kinds of revenue that they're bringing you and the purposes that you, you need the revenue to serve after you go through your transition here. So all the nitty gritty, all the approving expenditures comes with the annual budget process, which you're about to start for this coming fiscal year, but not yet for the post-transition years. So I did actually go through all of your meeting notes for the entire time we've been working on this financial forecast, all of my notes, everything that we've talked about with Lori and the team. And here's my super high level version of what, in terms of like directional information about board feedback and what you need to be able to say yes, what we've heard from you so far. So we definitely heard some sticker shock, especially in that first conversation. Thirty-one million felt like too steep of an increase. Steve, I remember you remembering a number from maybe ten years ago and this is a lot higher than that number. And when, this separate conversation, but all right. When we started talking about customer impacts, then that started in many of our customer categories to feel like it was driving too high of an increase. So part of that is the revenue structure, but part of it is the kind of big number goal of thirty-one million. That number made folks nervous and we heard that back from you. We've heard a number of folks similarly and related to the previous conversation on fiscal responsibility express concerns about the increases in FTE proposed in the financial forecast and Seth and others, how that reflects or doesn't reflect or continues a path of FTE increases that we've been on for some time pre-transition. So concerns about the FTE increases, we've heard some of those in specific areas in admin positions and cultural history for the IT position that I believe is, is proposed for some of the, you know, the, the curve of the historical increases. Jim and staff are doing work around all of these. I don't want you to feel like this is just a like, hey, we heard you and now on to the next show. This is all the stuff that Jim and the team are working on behind the scenes to start and Lori to start incorporating this into a next draft financial fore, forecast as we work our way through this. So I know the staff is working to get you some additional information on our current FTEs and proposed new FTEs for the next phases of this conversation. We heard from a number of folks very clearly concerned that they, they did not feel that there was enough funding for some of the new mandates, especially environmental mandates. And I think also some of the equity focused work and wanting to see at least the proposal or the potential for more funding to be available specific for that work. I'll share with you, this house taking them in a couple of different directions, exploring opportunities to raise that. It's also exploring opportunities to bring the overall price tag down, but also calling out places like Carrie Sandeman shared in a previous meeting where maybe it's the same FTE as always and we're doing the, the work in a different way. That doesn't mean we're in, under investing in the mission, doesn't mean we're over investing in the mission. That's a policy decision ahead of you as a board. But anyway, that's gone getting on to solutions. So this is something that we've heard clearly from a number of different board numbers. We've heard in addition, just some cautions from folks who have been involved in this sort of song, balance between operational and GO bond costs over time to make sure that as we are having kind of this separate conversation about the GO bond, estimating costs and revenue expectations around that, that we're actually anticipating operational costs associated with that, that we don't forget that we have two lines of work going on at the same time and we make sure that both are, are referring back to and, and supporting each other. Laurie, I know contingency is something that's driven you nuts and that some folks are telling you too high, too low. I think what you're hearing from everyone probably is let's find a best practice associated with, the way that we plan for contingency costs associated with this forecast and figure out something that we can tie it to. And that's a conversation that the tag group has started that we expect to dive into with some additional detail. So to our financial gurus that sit on the technical group, how can we tie our contingency estimate to something that, you know, reflects best practices, reflects the, the practices of, of, of other public organizations? And the one thing that we hear most often for me that we had to save till the end is that we need to fix the collections problem and the costs and, and revenue loss associated with that. And as Jim and others have stated many times, the staff are working hard on that and that message loud and clear. They don't expect to, they don't expect to try to convince you that that was a good idea. They just needed you to know what the cost implications of a failure to solve that problem. I'm going to ask for your feedback. I'm going to ask for your feedback on that previous slide in a second, but I do want to point out, we also have heard a lot about how we present and communicate results in the next iteration. And I know certainly for Lori and also for the echo team, this has been a really useful advice. We get kind of lost in our in the weeds of trying to create these documents and these analyses. And thinking about how to talk to them in a way that makes sense to other people is really important too. So I just want to quickly touch on some of the feedback we've heard there to reassure you. We haven't lost it. Adjusting the collection costs to sort of reflect the assumption that we're going to find a lower cost option there. Of course, it's the staff sort of best best recommendation about how to reflect that in our future documents, but the 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 reality that the high collection costs and revenue loss associated with that approach masks some of the other potential areas for change within the forecast. We heard feedback and you folks will have seen this last time Lori presented to focus as much as possible on year one costs. We know we should be planning for year five costs. But in communicating to, you know, bring back out Nancy's recommendation of we don't want to think about, we wouldn't want to hear about how much bread or milk is going to cost five years down the line. Let's keep it, you know, close to our current day. And start thinking about, start thinking about bridging into the future, at least with a focus on year one class. We've heard a couple of folks ask for more info, for more detail, for more transparency or sort of structure around how we talk about customer benefits and levels of service provided. The staff took, I think, a really solid first crack at that in the last press documented presentation Lori gave. There's a limit to the staff's ability to get very fine detail on some of this stuff at this point, but we're we're working in this direction. We're moving to to work this feedback in the best we can. And finally, just a reminder that Mary Helen and many of us have to go back and talk to our neighbors about this content. So the picture and and our political leaders and other folks that are part of these week to week conversations. So as much as possible, both in discussing things with the board and to share materials with you that you can share on with the folks that you represent and report to to focus on big picture information that's easier to digest and explain to to other folks that may I thought it was done. So some quick updates, I think I've hinted at a lot of these just to reassure you that we are actually working to take this feedback into account. We want to check and make sure we didn't miss anything big. There's this work with the tag additional tag meeting to go through that sort of total price tag, the FTEs and the cost assumptions. That meeting is coming up fast here and we'll create a a a report back, just like the one Collins about to do for the last tag meeting to share the results of that conversation with you in pretty significant detail, I think. Staff, as I said, is working on additional info on the FTEs to try to clarify where some of these historical positions have come from and what the gaps are that that new FTEs that are proposed are trying to meet. Clarifying which exists existing positions are able to contribute to some of the new mandates as Carrie described at a really high level in her presentation. I think it was the first or second December meeting where there may be some proposed expenditures on the new mandates that might not be terribly visible in the first crack at the financial forecast. And then ongoing collections with discussions with municipal partners to try to get that that alternative solution in place and be able to bring those price tags back to a more realistic level. All of that is underway. So I know it's hard to answer the question of what's missing. That is always my least quite favorite question to try to answer on the behalf of, you know, somebody who's just provided a synthesis, but have done an okay job of overviewing high level feedback that you've provided the staff and the consulting team on this financial forecast and that you would expect to see reflected in a new forecast. In a revised forecast, if we're going to be able to get you to yes. I think I've got just a few minutes here to ask folks to to share any additional feedback that that we may have missed. My synthesis is never perfect. Ken?
I think you're a spot on on a lot of what I I think are concerns that various members have provided. One thing I just add, and I'm not sure if it's been articulated is, you know, if we look back at the the legacy districts, they really served the community well, except when it got to certify in the levees and going into a modern system. And so I think these districts have changed over time. They're not the same districts that started when they were, when their charters were developed, they've changed with the needs of the community, with the needs of a growing land base, et cetera. And so as I look at some of these decisions being made, we we want to make sure that we're thinking about the future, you know, that maybe all our wants and needs can be done the first year. But maybe there's flexibility built within the model that things can happen over time and we get to the ultimate goal of where we want to be. And so building in flexibility that brings this into a modern era of the district. Even if, I mean, we're just talking about, you know, can we afford it or not? The reality is, is it's probably nobody's going to be fully happy with what gets settled out. But if there's flexibility over time and as as we can afford it as the landowners and the rate peers can afford it, we can improve those services and provided. One last thing I didn't see is we still, it's still not clear to me what level of service that we're aiming to plan towards in terms of, you know, our cost structure, and maybe that's embedded in the rate model again about having that flexibility and and being able to react in time to changing flood conditions and and climate change. But I just wanted to articulate that. And those are some of my thoughts as as Bill was talking earlier, then now you're laying this out.
Thanks, Ken. So just to be clear, in level of service, it sounds like you're talking about sort of flood safety performance level of service rather than the more sort of qualitative. You know, here are the benefits we're providing across the new mandates or the total mandates. Is that a fair?
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. I mean, one of Bill's quotes is we, you know, he wasn't really happy with planning to do two years, you know.
Yeah, what are we trying for instead?
Yeah, and we don't really want to rely on luck. I think that was the other word he used. And so, and so we want to make sure if we're building this for the future that we're actually doing it right and we have, we're pulling in the resources to do that.
Great. Thanks for the clarification, Ken. I'm writing this down. You'll see it next time I report back to you. But I'm going to keep us, I'm not going to provide a ton of follow on right now because I want to make sure we get to Anhel's discussion of of allocations too, because I know that's another question that's come up a lot. Mary Holland?
Started to follow on on my history research. When Karen Correa was there, we started, she started an DEI program for the district and I worked with her and Sam Miller and a number of other people. And I wanted and building on Ken's look to the future. It's not changed. It's still a need, but the approach and how it's the concept works. And so I have been a proponent of that for a long time, but my question has been previously, and maybe it was reflected somewhere and I missed it, but what is the minimum mandate that we can do when it says promote equity? Is that just tell people that this is our mission, vision, values? And this is our equity statement? Or do we have to have a full time employee to develop an equity program that other people are doing? Do we refer him to things? So to clarify, I guess, like Ken said, we look forward, but what can we do now to just meet minimum standards? And I I've heard different interpretations of that. So maybe Holland can get a legal interpretation of state statute, but promote and provide are much easier to do than spend money on full time positions to create programs that exist elsewhere.
So what's the balance between a creating an FTE there versus other other kinds of equity investments and making sure we're
This the mandate. Not go beyond in the first year, maybe the second year we can do more, but how do we do that just to get out of the blocks?
Right. Thanks, Mary Helen. So really similar to Ken's, but with a clear equity focus there on that that body of work. Eric?
So this is a comment about the appropriate capitalization of project management and engineering costs. As part of my work on pen two, I got interviewed by our outside accountants. And so that gave me an opportunity to ask them, how do you capitalize engineering and project management as part of this? And they had some very specific suggestions on it. But this could be, you know, quite literally several millions of dollars that is appropriate to put into the bond issue. And again, I apologize to you, Lori, for not having had the chance to to brief you on my conversation. But it's something that we should consider because it may be more appropriate to put the specific project management and engineering costs into the bond. So I leave that to the hands of the account.
Great, thanks. And we may come back to that in the in the bond discussion, Eric, but I think your point's well taken. Corky, and then I think I better hand you guys over to Anhel here before long, or I'm going to be accused of hogging the mic. No, I'm going to be guilty of hogging the mic. Sure, no one would accuse me of Corky.
When we talk about the the financial situation, how much money is needed in the future, I I think we, it might be useful to add in there essentially the cost of doing nothing. What, you know, because we're, these are very daunting numbers. We look at this, we say, oh, my God, this is horrible. It is horrible. But at the same time, we've got to put it in perspective. Part a good perspective is what if we don't do this? What will the cost be? And that's more complicated than what I just stated there, but I think we already have a lot of that information. Making sure that we convey that is important. And it might be, for example, and and part of that, I think, would include for current ratepayers, what's their current cost? What's their projected cost for 10 years from now? And what would be the projected cost if we don't go through with this effort? You know, kind of just lay that out objectively, candidly, you know, transparently. And I I think the numbers will start to look pretty good for us.
Yeah, thanks, Corky. Is that something you could imagine us doing in a slide deck rather than in the more detailed analysis, just sort of have some standing slides where we share that, especially for external outreach? Yeah, because we talked about that in terms of customer costs, but not as much for the sort of big picture. Yeah, and that gets back to a previous comment of Mary Helen's as well. Okay, if other ideas come to mind, you can put them in the chat. You're allowed to use the chat to everyone and I will tag it and bring it back to the group. So feel free to share additional thoughts there or to email the team with anything else that comes to mind as we continue this conversation. And we will come back with the tag feedback and with some proposed changes to that forecast over the course of the next month. Sound okay? Now, should I do the intro, Anhel? I know that you and I haven't talked and so my understanding, I'll share quickly my understanding. My understanding is that a number of you had questions in a previous conversation about where the splits are coming from in the Echo Northwest model about sort of what proportion is going to flood management, what's proportions going to storm water? And then those were kind of some base assumptions that went into that revenue modeling effort that folks had a lot of questions on. And so my understanding and Lori or Anhel, please feel free to correct me is that this is you coming back and saying, this is how we do it now, which is how we based what we asked the Echo Northwest team to run. I'm just trying to orient folks before you dive in here. Does that sound okay?
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah. We really did want to share information with the board members about the current process because that modeling and all of that information for all of the districts was provided to Echo Northwest. And they utilize that to do their modeling and do the expense allocations. So we thought it would be really helpful for you all to see what we're doing now and understand the fact that that is sort of a consistent kind of allocation process that Echo Northwest has built into their modeling. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Anhel because he understands this allocation process even better than I. And he can explain to you hopefully in some reasonable terms the complex model that we use to do that allocation.
And it will be my goal to do it between a reasonable timeframe so we don't take time to the last presentation. I do not have the capability to share my screen. Wendy, do you have the presentation? Looks like I have it right now. I I do have now. Okay, there we go. Just want to make sure that I go about that. Give me one second. Here we go. And hopefully you're seeing my presentation there. Okay, perfect. So I'm going to try to walk you through the current methodology we use for the assessment allocation. To begin with, we have, and I need to move this screen here because it's blocking my notes. Here we go. We use cost drivers to do the assessment calculation. Currently is the flow control, a stormwater peak and a stormwater average. Those are the costs associated for fault control, cause of here for protection, the properties between the district for a sterile flooding from the Columbia River and Columbia Slope up to the 500 year event. We refer to a stormwater peak to the costs associated with the capacity to district facilities to meet peak flow demands that includes the protection of properties from the flooding potential, anything greater than the 24 hour two year event and up to the 100 year storm to meet the flood protection standards. We refer to a stormwater average to the costs associated with the capacity for our district. Pump capacity, channel capacity and storage designed to meet a 24 hour, two year storm event. Once those are the drivers that we use to allocate the the different costs. When we get the budget approval, the staff estimates the percentage of this budget item where, you know, 100% of this cost is for control or is 50 50 or whatever percentage, so we can get to the overall cost of the allocation. Expenses that are paid from separate sources will be a grant that is going to pay for a specific cost is not calculated on this because again, they got their own revenue source. They have example, just a grant that has a specific purpose and goal that is taken away from that. So we use it to come up with the unit rates that we use to assess the allocate the assessment to the different property and landowners. We use the measurements of the area and also the previous area as a way basis for that calculation. The area square footage and its section in pen one, pen one, we use the entirety of just the square footage. And then two, we have an additional cost driver for those in the fall control between levy lots and no levy lots. But otherwise, this is standard for all four districts. So let's go and look at an example here. We have the MCD assessment for 20 to 23 was 6.4 million. After going through the different causes in the budget, 41% was for control, 26 was storm peak and 33 was storm average. Putting value to that, we have 2.6 million that was for control, 1.6 storm peak and 2.1 is strong average. So now, how do we come up with the different unit rates? I'm going to go to the next screen. So once we have the budget amount discharged, we'll see a what we do is for fault control, we take the 2.6 million divided by the square footage. And we come with the rate of point 00858458. And we do the same for stormwater peak and stormwater average. So now that we have the unit rate, then we can look at different property lots and allocate the assessment accordingly. The last slide here, I have four properties. For example, we have a large government entity, semi government entity as the first line in there. The largest MCD. Next, we have a property that is private property. The next one is an apartment complex. And the last one is a property owner. As you can see, we have a taxable area and also in previous area. So what we do for the first line for the first property, we multiply 1.43666 times the rate that we have, and we come up with the flood control assessment. For stormwater peak and stormwater average, we follow this methodology. And that's how we divide with the total assessment for each of the four properties. In previous area, if you are not familiar with that, I believe that is the ground cover that allows little to no rainwater. So we have in previous area in three properties, but the homeowner doesn't have that particular assessment. Hence, there is no stormwater peak assessment for this particular property. And that is in a very quick to try to get us back in schedule explanation of how the assessment is currently allocated. And now I can open it for questions, I think, and I can I can leave this screen here, this particular slide on the screen. Is there anything? And I cannot see everyone. So if someone raises their hand, please let me know.
Yeah, I can help direct traffic a little bit on hell. So so just to circle back, a reminder, you you remember when the echo team was saying, you know, these, these are the proportions that we're using for this model running forward. This is the very, very, very detailed response to where those where those numbers came from that went to the echo team, right? So let's, let's get any kind of follow up informational kind of Q and A taken for taken care of here. And then we'll be able to point you back to this. And then we'll be able to point you back to this uh presentation as as Wendy reminded us, this is in the board packet, and we can send out the final slides afterwards as well. When this conversation comes up again, we'll be able to refer back to this this methodology. But folks who want to get to this level of detail, let's make sure we understand it well now. Seth.
Yeah, um, just as a, because the Eco Northwest team talked about operations as either flood control or stormwater. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, and you have three categories, flood control, stormwater peak, and stormwater average. What did they aggregate into flood versus stormwater?
Anhel or Lori, do you know, or I believe we have Sarah Rich on the line too, if if we need the Echo team to speak to that.
I believe we would need the Echo team to speak to that. We don't work with their model.
Sarah, can you help us understand where where you stepped from this to the first slide of your November presentation?
You bet. Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay, good. I'm having trouble with my um system today. Okay. Um, we, in that case, uh, first for the stormwater component versus the flood control of the 4456 split, we did um add the two stormwater components together to for the 56.
And and functionally, what's the difference between storm stormwater peak control, which is 100, a two-year to 100-year event? How's that different than flood control?
Can the MCD team or Anhel, can you answer that?
Yeah, the fault control is the protection of properties of external product from the Columbia River and Columbia Slope up to the 500-year event. And when, if you want to go more the technical part of it, I think there might be someone else in operations team that can go and add a little more on that. And I call him, maybe, I don't know.
Maybe Bill, yeah.
And I think the easiest way is uh flood flood safety is your levy system, but there's a lot of other pieces to it that Anhel was um alluding to, but just think of that as your external system, and then everything else is your internal system. But I just see that Bill came online, so he can add some color and texture.
Shaking his head. Nothing to add to that, Bill? Seth, is that enough for you to run on for now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thanks. Steve?
Thank you, Anhel. That was um, that was great. I I it's very clear. Um, I don't have any questions about the technical kind of components of how it was put together. I what I feel like um there's some policy questions, though, that this group needs to ponder, more philosophical kind of bigger picture questions about the nature of things. And I mean, one would be, you know, a levy system doesn't really truly function. I I understand the difference that we're protecting from the Columbia River, and that's kind of how we allocate. But logically, those costs are going to be really low because you're just looking at maintaining a berm of soil, essentially. But that whole system does not work unless you have the stormwater control because naturally you're going to have storm, when you build a levy system, you're blocking natural drainage that would flow from the land to the to the river. That's part of the whole system. So that is, to me, it's it's a philosophical fallacy to assign all of those costs to those properties just because the water flows downhill when that's is a system that's needed to protect pro certain properties and not others. So I I that that's where I made a comment. I forget at this board meeting or um the 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 tag that my suggestion would be to look at it a little differently philosophically to say part of those costs, yeah, maybe it does make sense because we've built impervious surfaces that aren't natural drainage, and we've exacerbated peak flows, and we've done things that have caused real costs to the district. But there's a lot of flow that comes naturally down Fairview Creek from Gresham that originates in Gresham that would be flow coming into the system regardless of whether there's man-made development or not. And there's there's a lot of um there's a lot of that 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 messes with, in my mind, how we're how we're just very logically saying, well, that's water from here, so you're going to pay for it. And that's water from here, and you're going to pay for it. It just doesn't make sense to me. I I guess I'm looking at it from a different perspective than you guys are. You're looking at it from the perspective of the district, and I'm looking at it from the perspective of the landowners or 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 the cities. And I think we need to reconcile those things before we just march ahead to say this is right and that's wrong.
So I suspect we're not going to resolve that today, Steve. But Anhel or Colin or Lori, any any feedback on your kind of philosophical view or how how we might address that going forward?
I would say your finance team is not going to address that philosophical question. Um, we can talk about calculations, but we leave those philosophical discussions to the experts.
Coming, sorry, Lori, coming out of these tag meetings and considering whether there's kind of a hydrology technical advisory group that might be able to wrestle with that. But it, yeah, it is, it is more an expression of how they try to make it work now, and the costs have to go somewhere. Jim?
Well, I think, Steve, what you're suggesting is there's some ways to rethink the allocation of costs and benefits based on different philosophies, and I think that's part of what we need a little bit more information from all of you on, so that we are trying to hit where most of you agree, right? Um, so I think it's a worthy point and something that we need to follow up on, and Steve, I think you articulated it well. At the end of the day, there's costs that this board needs to confront and allocate. And those costs incorporate conveying really heavy water on a regular basis. So somehow we have to determine how we're going to cover those costs or reduce them.
Okay, Nancy, and then I'd like to hand it over to Colin to make sure we make it through our last two items today if we can.
Yeah, I'll just say what you said. Steve sounds like something the board should provide direction on, I think. And I think that's what I heard back from Jim. So, yeah, looking forward to working on that. So um one thing I want to clarify, thank you so much for the this level of details. It's very helpful. Um, I think, so that's how it works ideally. And then if a property is compressed, it's not like you go to each one and do the pluses and minuses. Any of the compression is dealt with, like you have your overall budget. And if some one property is compressed over here, another one will just end up paying more. Well, all the other ones that aren't compressed will end up paying more through this methodology process because your number, 9 million or 20 million or whatever it is right now, is the number, and you have to meet it somehow. Is that right?
Uh, I don't know. Well, sort of. I would say sort of. So if we anticipate the compression correctly in our estimates, which we do make an effort, although we got a little bit of surprise on MCD this year, which we'll be talking about at the MCD board meeting. If we can anticipate the compression, if it's consistent historically, which most of them are, um, then you are correct. The costs, we will need to do more of an increase in rate to be able to spread those costs across the properties that are not compressed. So there is an equity issue with the with the Oregon property tax system, right? And we're using the Oregon property tax system right now to allocate our assessments. If we do not, if we get a surprise on the compression, which we did in MCD this year, um, then we don't get as much revenue as we need it and because it gets compressed out. So um when we can make a good estimate, which is kind of a crystal ball thing, yes, it gets reallocated. But if not, then we end up in a situation where we're not um bringing enough revenue in to cover the budget and expenses.
Right. And then um, and that's one of the inequities we're getting doing away with by having a fee structure instead of property tax going forward. Thanks.
That's correct. That's the good part.
Okay.
As long as we can figure out how to collect it.
But it seems like this has been a helpful conversation for the board members that wanted to dive into this topic. Jim, I'm sorry.
Um, it's good as long as we can figure out how to collect it, as you all know, so.
Yeah. Okay, I think the next item in our fruit salad today was Colin for you and Sarah to thank you, Anhel and and Lori, for you and or Sarah to report back on the results of the tag meeting the other day and make sure we maintain some transparency with this group about the way in the weeds technical conversations that you're having with um your financial experts from any of the organizations here.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just going to give a quick introduction and hand it over to Sarah um Rich, but I do want to make a bit of a segue from that conversation about influent water and defining the watershed that uh this technical advisory group that we have pulled together is a group of technical experts. Uh, but there's many kinds of technical experts, and this is really a group of people um who are financial and planning experts, a number of them that have uh been a part of these conversations uh throughout the development of this district um and and just about how it is constructed and how it can be funded. Um, for technical work around the watershed and defining that, I just wanted for all the board members to know uh that our staff has reached out to the jurisdictions uh board members to ask for their um hydraulic and hydrology um hydrologists, whomever they may be within their organizations that would have the specific knowledge around how they define the watershed, to also take a look at that um and help us refine and have a better definition from that kind of technical perspective of what is the watershed? What is the water that comes in? Um, and we'll continue to refine that and have further conversations. Um, but back to the meeting on December 22nd, we brought together the technical advisory group. Um, we also had a few board members uh that were able to attend um as well. And the technical advisory group was brought together to review what um was brought to you as far as the model, the bases that were in there, the different geographic allocations, and then also to review and provide some feedback on the five-year um financial forecast and really looking at the structure of that forecast, uh the assumptions that were built into it. Um, and to to sort of refine that. Um, and so I just do want to uh kind of following on that tag group versus board members. Um, just want to stress that the tag really is an advisory group. Um, they uh don't have a perfect representation, one-to-one for all the board members. Um, but really, they're a group uh committed to providing advice. But really, the policy and the decision-making is with this group. Um, so what we've committed to do is to make sure that all the feedback that they provide is synthesized and is brought to you. Um, and it will be on your direction that will incorporate um or or change uh what that is. But it really is helpful having some of that outside and inside uh perspective to help drive this. Um, I also want to note that uh in the board packet, there is a memo that is missing. Um, so that uh was a summary of the feedback that we heard. Um, and a lot of it is uh it will will need to follow up on anyways. But after this meeting, there's a couple pieces that um I'll make sure Wendy has uh and can distribute to you all. But I'll hand it over to Sarah now to go over some of that feedback and then what the next steps with the tag look like. So thanks all.
Colin, just real quick, as Sarah gets settled, I noticed Seth has his hand up.
Thanks for noticing that, Seth. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's that's okay. Um, I just, you you mentioned something about kind of the the charge of the tag, and I wanted to follow up on it. Um, I went back and looked at the October 20 and November 2nd minutes where we were talking about putting the tag together. And it seemed like most of the board member comments from those were to take a look at the operating costs, um, benchmarking, um, looking at the financial document comparators. Um, and there weren't any that necessarily wanted to re that group necessarily to do a deep dive into the the revenue allocation model. And so I'm wondering kind of, and I was a little surprised at the first meeting that it was all revenue focused and not necessarily focused on the operating costs. So I'm wondering where kind of the direction to focus on revenue first rather than the addressing the comments that the board had made at those two meetings about why we were pulling the group together was different.
That's a great point, Seth. So taking a step back, um, the technical advisory group was first pulled together in November of 2021. Um, and throughout the development of this model, uh, all the decisions that the board has made as far as um the different revenue tools uh that should be considered, uh, the the initial bases. Um, all of those have been passed through this technical advisory group. I think in total, they've met four times. Um, and it's usually before or after sort of a large step in the process is needed. Um, and so that's why they were brought back together here. Um, Seth, you are right, there is definitely an interest um in taking a look at the notes uh for having a review of the um the mechanics of the financial forecast, and that's why we'll we'll have some continued conversation and make sure that there's enough room for it. So uh there is the need for the financial forecast, and there's also the need for um what is currently in front of the board as far as uh potential options for the model.
And Colin, it sounds like that request, I believe, came from the Echo team and from staff that just looking for additional expertise there.
Correct.
Sarah, shall we hand it over to you? You should be able to share your screen here.
Yeah, and actually, I have written notes here, so I um not going to pop slides on today. We can talk you through, I'm going to talk you through uh the the three key areas that we discussed. Um, and if you look in your board packet, there was a memo that we sent to the tag. And really, most of the discussion um was around item number one. And then we will continue to work with the tag to get feedback on items number two and three in that memo. So the things I'm going to talk about really primarily related to the questions that we raised about the assumptions for the cost distributions. And so the first piece of that, which we've already talked about a little bit, I've heard conversation today um that you all talked about in there relates to Anhel's presentation, was about the assumptions for cost distribution for the stormwater services. And when we think about stormwater services, we're really talking about the two geographies, the managed floodplain and the watershed. And there were three areas um that we focused on within that, uh, the first, which again has already come up today, was a recognition that there are hydrologic questions that um this group probably isn't the most it it isn't within their technical purview, and that we will continue to rec- recognize that those questions arise and get the appropriate technical um technical advice for how to handle those hydrologic questions. Um, and that was recognized and acknowledged within within the body of the tag. Um, the other piece that um that came up as we were talking about stormwater services um is a recognition that within the model currently there um we are allocating the um the costs of service um on, based on two different bases, a a benefits received by the customer and a cost basis. And um there was a a lot of really great conversation about whether that was apples and orange, that apples and oranges was appropriate or not. Um, and we'll continue to uh to think about that along the lines, Steve, that 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 you have uh brought up among others, and thinking about the philosophical underpinnings of how we are um characterizing and distributing those stormwater costs. And then the final piece of this, Steve, that I think you have spoken to numerous times very eloquently is about what is that appropriate baseline for understanding the um the 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 stormwater, the the contribution of the watershed to the um to the cost of the district has to incur to manage that stormwater. And that has to deal with both the um, you know, the development within the watershed and what that contributes um, you know, with versus without thinking, and then the levies the same way. What um costs are added by the levies being present versus not? And who uh do those extra costs get distributed to? So there's a lot of really great philosophical questions there that the tag did wrestle with, and these are, you know, came to no conclusion conclusion on. And eh I think appropriately, thinking about this as a policy question that you all will need to give direction on is is um is where we landed. But some of those conversations will be ongoing on the technical aspects of it with tag members over the next few weeks. Um, and I'll get to the the next steps in a few moments. So that was one big meaty area that the group spent a lot of time around. Um, the second area that that we focused on is thinking about the split between direct avoided costs um to property owners within the managed watershed to customers within the managed watershed and managed floodplain, sorry, and the indirect avoided regional economic um disruption. So the co- um the benefits of avoiding that regional disruption to the economy. And a a couple of really good uh interesting points arose there in terms of whether some of those benefits are being captured potentially in the the um costs that people are paying through the geo bond and whether that is an appropriate way to think about that. Because again, we're just focused on the operational costs through the um eh and how we allocate those through the the service fee. Um, and uh I think a a counterpoint to thinking about whether those um those benefits are covered by the geo bond is recognizing that operational expenses are required to achieve the benefits, the flow of benefits that that capital investment brings. So, you know, trying to weigh some of those um those kinds was a point of conversation, and that's sort of the philosophical. And that's sort of the philosophical level. And then we got into talking about some of the data sources available to justify the current split that we have in the model, which is 50/50 direct benefit versus indirect regional benefit. And we received some additional information from the port after the meeting that we're reviewing. And again, those conversations will be ongoing. I'm sure we'll revisit that the next time we talk with the tag. But some progress being made there. And then finally, the third general category that, that came up was about how we're representing the benefits to properties within the managed floodplain. This gets back to some of the way that we've defined, designed the, the basis by which those, those costs are distributed to customers within that single geography. Something that we talked at length about last February and is appropriately, we're checking in on as, as we're refining things. And so a lot of good discussion around the approach of using real market value combined with elevation and whether that's still the right way to think about this. What are some of the limitations of the data sources that we might deal with and implementation? And whether there are other approaches here that we should continue to, to, to consider. So, uh, I think that that kind of encapsulates the major themes that came up through that discussion. We, since we did not get to questions two and three of our memo that we expected, and that, that wasn't unexpected. We knew there'd be a lot of meaty discussion under that first one. We have scheduled a second, a follow-up meeting with the tag on the 12th of the month, I believe. And so we're going to focus on those two areas that we didn't really get to explore in detail. And then in the meantime, people are feeding us information. And so there are some ongoing conversations with tag members between now and then, just to keep things moving. So I'll stop there and see if anyone has any questions or anything to add. I, actually, I'll, I'll say one more thing. In response to some of the questions that came up during the tag meeting, and Seth, I believe, directly in response to your question, we have provided those cost apportionment assumptions by apportioning the revenue forecast to the specific geographies by service there. So that's the additional information, piece of information that, that you've requested in the memo.
And that was included in the board packet.
So Sarah and Colin, Eric had noted in the chat here that we're running behind schedule. We do want to make sure we have a chance for Jamie to provide some background. So I'm going to ask Mary Helen for a quick question or comment here. And then I'm going to suggest we research, circle back for discussion after the second tag meeting and after folks have a chance to review the memo, if that's okay.
I'll be quick. Is your definition of customer include those properties that are not currently paying for? Because they, the property tax assessment, the current legacy districts, the park bureau, city prop BES, all those are not. But will they be included in the customer?
Those are all, yep, those are all customers in our model. And we've broken them out in different ways and will continue to bring you new information on breaking, on, on the, the rates by customer with different categories in the next iteration. So, yeah.
Great. Thanks, Sarah.
Hey.
Jamie, I cut you tighter than we intended. I'm very sorry. But as Jamie pointed out in the chat, she's gonna, she and the geo bond are going to be a regular feature in our conversations moving forward. So we will grow this space over time until you guys have a fair bit of the floor going forward. Jamie, you going to focus us on process proposal today?
Yep, exactly. Great. Thanks, Sarah. And so I have the same slides that I spoke with you in December. And I wasn't going to go through all of those because I introduced them all to you in December. And so you've seen them, but there are just a couple of slides I wanted to focus your attention on because we didn't have chance for discussion in December. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so everybody should be seeing this, the, the overall schedule that you saw earlier in the meeting today. Yes, thank you, Sarah, for nodding your head. I appreciate that immediate feedback. So I wanted to just start with this one, just to kind of ground you again on, not ground you down, but ground you like stable, it just where we are. So the green bar, and you'll, you'll see this chart nearly every meeting when we show you where we are. The green bar is focused on the geo bond. And the geo bond really has, you know, a really two big components, but a couple of subcomponents. The two big components are the process to develop and refine and refer the bond. And then the second big component is the campaign part. I'm focusing on the development of the geo bond process part. That's what I'm talking about a little bit today. And, and so you'll see where we're right here at the process recommendations and the board and stakeholder input and the drafting, the measure and refinements. That's the process that I'm sharing with you today. So the next one I want to share with you is, this is, was in your packet. What was missing in your packet was this little red bracket on the bottom that says we are here. And the, and what, the reason why I want to show you this one and talk it through just a moment is to remind you all that there's, there's an internal and an external part of the geo bond process. The internal part is your staff will be working to help develop this initial package. You know, I had a really great conversation with Bill yesterday about sort of, you know, how to go about doing that process and about the work of his team to tee that up. And so there's an internal piece that will be, you know, that Bill and Jim and Colin and Carrie and others, you know, will all be helping to refine and bring information to you. And then there's the external piece. And so the external piece you all will see before we make it to the public. And that's really your role. I mean, you, you as the board, you'll see the information from the staff. You'll get comfortable with that. We will talk with you about how we would like to roll that out or key questions for the public. And you'll have an opportunity to weigh in on that before we go out to the broader public. But so that we are here, you know, we're kind of in between this stakeholder interviews to inform the process. I've met with nearly everybody. I think there's only three people I haven't met with yet. And so for those of you who have not met with me, you know who you are. And I would very much like to still have time, a little bit of time to talk with you so we can follow up. And so we're, we're in the process. So with all of the interviews that we had were to help to sort of introduce these concepts. Here are people's concerns and ideas about the geo bond process moving forward. Float some ideas that we had around the, the right approach for engaging the public in the board's role. And so that's, we've built that all into the process that I'm going to share with you. So let me get to, I'm going to skip a couple of slides here because these are ones we talked about in December. And I'm going to go right to this slide and the next one. Because these are the ones I want to pause on and get some feedback from all of you and just have some conversation. So I just want to remind you that the communication outreach and engagement component, the external facing part of the geo bond development has three main components. There's the public outreach and information which spans, which begins, you know, in February and goes all the way through to, you know, all the way through May of 2024 about, you know, just this is, this is who you are, this is what we're doing to just provide that basic education. So that's one component. The second component is building a coalition. These are the folks that are going to help you to champion and communicate out and bring more people in about what the, you know, about your bond. These are the community leaders, community organizations. So this is your coalition of support. The third component is developing and refining the geo bond package. And so that comes with information from your coalition that comes from broader public, that comes from conversations that you're having before you refer. So those are the three big components of the work that we're going to be doing beginning in February, moving all the way through into the fall. So that's the, that's the what. So this slide is the how. And so the how, the public outreach and information component, the yellow, I have it, I have it spanning everything because it's, it's continuous through everything that we're doing. The major components of it are e-news, webinar, town hall with a, you know, with survey components, I'm tabling at events, you know. So that's, that's the public outreach information piece. The building, the coalition part is more strategic. That begins, I'm saying now, and we've already actually been doing some work on that in the late fall as we've had some interviews with different community leaders and the business community and cultural communities as well as with all of you and the individual interviews to understand, you know, who is your network? And, you know, who could these champions be? And also who are the naysayers that we would need to spend more time with to understand? So that's, so that's targeted outreach. The second two bullets is what I really want to hear a little bit more from you about. And we're going to talk some more about this in your meeting on January 19th. And so we're floating this idea of having a couple, having two or three board liaisons from your board, kind of piggybacking on something Sarah said earlier about, hey, this is a model that we want to do is having a few of you work a little bit more intensely and then bring recommendations back to the board. And so we would like to have a, a two to three board liaisons that can work closely with me and my team and with a, a panel of advisors. Any of you who are familiar with, you know, geo bonds or campaigns, often there's a, they call it a kitchen cabinet. And, you know, these are folks that are your, you know, they're your advisors, they're your fingers out into the community to help add capacity and augment your reach as a board. Because, you know, your board covers, you've got 17 member board, you've got a lot covered there. But there are some, you know, there are some areas where we, we need to strengthen in order to help build that coalition. And so we would like to establish that panel of advisors. It's small but nimble, small and mighty, I think I used the last term last time, and work closely with the board liaisons to identify those folks and to work with those folks. And what the board liaisons and the panel advisors would be doing, and this is the last bucket here, is as, you know, when we're bringing questions out to the public, when we're engaging them in webinars and we're gathering information back, this small group will help to synthesize and refine and bring information back to the board to say, hey, here's what people are saying, here's what they're concerned, here's information that they need, here's what we need to do next. Here's who's been involved and who hasn't. And here's what we think we should do to adapt our process to be responsive to that. So I'm going to pause here and I'm going to take this down because I want to be able to see everybody and hear and, and get some input from all of you around what I've just put out there. And while you're thinking, on just, on January 19th, we have a placeholder on your agenda for us to come and take a deeper dive around your role as board members in the geo bond process. And also we want to bring to you some criteria around what we're looking for in the board liaisons and have that deeper conversation to actually designate who those folks are so we can get going on this. So I'm going to pause and see if there are any hands, questions. Input, other thoughts? Steve?
Just a question, I'm not quite sure who the right person to answer it is. And maybe there isn't a clear answer. It's just something we need to think about as a board. We don't know how much money might be coming from the federal government to aid kind of in these projects. So when we get to the point where we're, we're really developing a package for geo bond to go out to, to vote for, for our public here. I'm just wondering kind of how we make that differentiation when we pull the trigger on a certain dollar amount. And is that going to be a really difficult process, not knowing kind of where that, some of that other money might be coming from and, and using, obviously, that's a touting point to the public that, look, if we can get a geo bond passed, we're going to have other monies to couple this with, to do these projects, to get this done. But there's that uncertainty, I think, about exactly how much we're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Through the PMLS assessment, we have a pretty good handle on the costs for the PMLS projects and the FEMA certification projects. And we anticipate, based on the forecasts and budgeting done through those assessments, that there could be up to about 110 million in federal investment to provide the two-thirds of the PMLS share. Could alter a little bit there. And the FEMA projects and Colin helped me here, I think we're anticipating those are somewhere on the order of an additional 50 million or so. So we're looking at a minimum of 150 million to do the PMLS local match and the FEMA certification projects. Then you have to look at your assets and liabilities report and your new mandates and determine what additional revenue you'd like to include in and ask of the voters. Colin, did I get that right?
That sounds right. And we do have, so of course, the PMLS work will require annual appropriations. But in the Water Resources Development Act of 2022, we did have a congressional authorization of the construction project. So that is as strong of a, of a sort of move, you're going to move ahead that the federal government can give. It's an act of Congress that basically says this project has been authorized for construction. So we, and, and so I think leveraging that and, and being able to message that we need to have this geo bond to help support and leverage these federal dollars is, is a really important message. And of course, there will also be in, in consideration that we've been doing in the background, something that Mary Helen has brought up in the past is, what do we do if we don't get those federal investments so that we do have some of the contingency planning? But that's really not the public message.
I do think it's worth noting, though, and really stressing the fact that the vast majority of our capital program is pretty well-vetted and, and prepared to move into pre-design after the work of the PMLS and Levy Ready Columbia work. There is a, a remaining portion of the new mandates and, and non-met needs that aren't incorporated in those that where we really need your attention and your policy guidance.
Mary Helen?
Thanks, Colin, for pointing out that, what do we do if we don't get the money? Because that's an issue that I've heard time and time again, what's the money going to pay for? And if we can't tell them what the money is going to pay for, and you said they're going to start putting a community engagement package together. It sounds like we're going to say, I mean, and, and I'm being really not politically correct, but we're going to go out and say, give us money and we'll tell you what we're going to do with it later. Or we may not get the money, but we want you to vote for this bond just in case we do need the money. So it, I guess I, I'm not understanding the message. And until somebody can say, you know, the cost analysis, I don't know how you can do community engagement for a geo bond when we don't know what, you know, we can, we haven't determined what the costs are. And then, and I've said this a million, maybe not a million, maybe a thousand times. If we can't tell people what they're going to pay for, they're not going to vote for a bond.
Right. And Mary Helena, we hear you. And that's, that's that, remember I mentioned the internal and the external work? There's, there's, there's robust internal work that needs to occur in order to tee up a package for your consideration and for the public's consideration. A lot of that work has been done because of the assets and liability work, because of the PMLS and the FEMA accreditation projects work. And, you know, through your CIPs. And so it's, it's working with Bill and his team and the executive team, Colin, Jim, and Lori and others to put that package together to bring it to all of you. And, and then to bring it out to the public and say, these are the, these are the projects, this is the need. You know, here's where we need your help. So we're not going to bring anything out until we've talked with all of you as a board. So I hope that LA is some concern.
And thank you, because I know the PMLS part is pretty well-defined of what we need and that amount. But do we want the geo bond to be more or less, is that all? You know, those are the kinds of questions that I think, before we start a community engagement package that we're able to answer for ourselves so that we can relay that to the people that are going to be voting.
Right. Colin, I saw you unmute and then mute. Did you want to say something?
No, I think you covered exactly, you know, the, reiterating what you said. And Jim said that a lot of this has already come from pretty deep technical analysis. And we can say what has already been done. And I think the point of what additional work is, considering that we have the statute mandates doing a watershed improvement plan and making sure there's a requirement that in our planning at this stage that we adequately allow room for that process to go forward. And so things will come out of that. And so the, and then there's additional mandates that we also need to consider. So what that additional piece is, is really important. But it is, I want to emphasize that for the flood safety components, a lot of great work has been done over the years. So what that additional piece is, is really important, but it is, I want to emphasize that for the flood safety components, a lot of great work has been done over the years.
So other thoughts on the, just the overall process that we've laid out and, you know, just and recognizing that, you know, we've got to start. Somewhere, you know, we have to start with some plan about how we're going to move forward. And when, you know, every, all of you have been involved in public engagement in 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 other venues. You've probably noticed that you have to adapt and adjust. And so based on, you know, who's participating and who's not, we'll make some changes in refinement. I'll work closely with Aster. You know, to to do and with the board and with the panel of advisors to make those adjustments. As as we need. But I'm going to be in front of you, probably every board meeting here moving out. So there'll be no surprises. We'll be taking nothing out until you've all had a chance to see it. And we're going to start working with you in earnest later this month. Aster, is there anything that you want to add? Not to put you on the spot, but I appreciate your head nodding.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that there is a difference between engagement and communication. So part of the engagement work, engaging you all, engaging our panel advisors will be defining. What what we include in the geo bond in regards to those additional mandates. Because as Jamie said, we know what's in our assets and liabilities report. We have the PMLS work pretty well defined, but it is, and that's, that's, you know. Maybe seventy, eighty percent of the package, it's that remaining twenty percent or so that we need to work with you. And different community stakeholders to define. And then once we have that more refined, that's when we go out to the public more broadly.
Thanks for that. Sarah?
Mr. Chair, we let things run over for a little while there, but Jamie helped us land right, right on schedule. Did you have any, Steve or Jim, any final words for the team as we wrap up this fairly fairly ambitious meeting here?
I guess the the only thing that I would really ask you all to really consider is take a look at the news about the atmospheric rivers hitting California and literally think about. But for a tiny shift in the atmosphere, we would have been confronting those and your staff probably wouldn't have been here today. We would have been out flood fighting. Bill really did a thoughtful job identifying that our system worked barely. And so all of this conversation, I just want to emphasize to you the urgency that I feel every time it rains. To get these capital investments going. And so I hope you will help me maintain that sense of urgency. So that Eric Moanders grandchild has a great place to live on the floodplain. Thank you. Sorry to be on my soapbox, but I do think it's part of my job. So I appreciate your tolerance of my concerns about our pace here. Our system is aged and the threats are increasing, and I appreciate your help in addressing those threats.
Well stated, Jim. Any other comments, questions, business of the board?
Can I just make one comment? Jim, I want to identify with your. Troubles because I have a friend who's on the Sacramento Water District doing the same kinds of things. And they've just had unprecedented, never been seen before in the American River and the lakes around them flooding. So I guess my political comment here is that I'm really tired of hearing never happened before and this is unprecedented. Because I think that's where we're living. And so that's why I keep asking these questions about. What happens if, because we can't base our theories on just because we were always able to find the money, do the things. What happens if we can't? And I think that's only coming true in any number of ways in our lives these days.
Thank you, Mary Helen. Well stated. Thanks, staff. Thank you, Sarah, for great facilitation. We are on time today. Amazing. Didn't didn't seem like we were going to hit this earlier, but we did it. So thank you all for your participation. Great discussion and we'll see you at the next meeting. We've got some homework in the meantime.
Happy New Year, everybody.
So we'll officially call this meeting closed. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.